I am calling this meeting of February 27 into order. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is attendance. I have all my colleagues here today. Item number four, executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Great. And for executive session, I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselors Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Thank you. We will go into executive session and return when we are done. Thank you so much. Welcome back. We will go to item number five, public engagement. Sherri, is there anyone for public engagement online?
Not that I am aware of, Chair.
That's great. Okay, we will moving on to item number six, fiscal year 2024 budgets. Hello, Kevin.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you? Let's start budget six A, the fire department.
Yes, fire department. We have Acting Chief Tom Purcell here tonight.
I believe the term is provisional fire chief.
Provisional.
As I was told.
I'll go over the budget, budget summary, and then I'll turn it over to Tom if there's any specific questions.
That's great, thank you.
The fire department budget, we're recommending this budget be increased $140,185 over the current fiscal year. The increase in personal services is $126,785. This includes raises for the chief and deputy chief. Also included are step increases in increases to other contractual items. We also increased the overtime line item $50,000 due to both current and prior year costs. The, I do want to note, the fire union contract has not been settled. That will be funded through an article once that is settled. The contractual services portion of the budget has increased $9,400. We have small increases in telephone, $2,000, auto repair, $3,000, radio repair, $4,000, and the advertised line item, $400. Another small increase under materials and supplies of $4,000. We increased the motor vehicle parts line item, $3,000 due to higher costs. We reduced the medical supply line item, $3,000. We're using state and federal grants to supplement that line item. And we increased the fuel and oil line item, $4,000 for higher costs. The total budget request for fiscal '24 is $6,467,517. And with that.
Chief?
Hi, thank you for having me. I'll answer any questions if you have them. Kevin went down the list pretty good, but I have plenty of notes here, and however I can help you, I will.
Sure. Counselor Vincent, did you have a question for Chief Purcell?
I'm just gonna call you sir because I've got dental issues and I can't say provisional fire chief. Just help me out with a couple numbers. In 2022, you answered 4,387 calls.
Correct.
In 2021, the year prior, you answered 3,999, so 388 more calls this year than 2022 than 2021.
Correct.
And then in 2020, you answered 3,733 calls. So you answered 654 more calls in 2022 than you did in 2020.
Correct, 6.46% increase the first year, another 9.7% increase, maybe a little bit less.
And what impact do you find that the abundance of extra calls causes for overtime?
Well, it's affecting every part of the department, but the abundance of calls, you know, it affects, we have a lot of simultaneous calls. I don't know, you know, the abundance of calls, people are tired, you know, you get more sick, more injuries. You know, that's been fairly level every year, but the abundance of calls is putting a strain on the department, no question. There's a lot of simultaneous calls these days, there's a lot of back-to-back calls. If you do the averages, you know, 12 to 15 calls a day, but you know, if you're in the building, it's much busier than that.
I'm no mathematician, that's why I went into law, but you did 388 more calls in 2022 than 2021, so that's an average of more than one per day than you had the previous year. And if you did 654 calls in 2022 greater than you had in 2020, you're answering two more calls per day than you were just two years ago.
Right.
What impact does that continue to have?
It affects apparatus, it affects fuel, it affects individuals, I mean, it affects supplies, it affects every part of the budget, I mean, people are just generally busier. And, you know, it's, there's more stress on the department, again, on the apparatus, mechanical failure on some of the engines.
Warranted here in the equipment.
Yeah, warranted here in the equipment. We have to make sure we have everything ready all the time. And what we see a lot, again, is you pull in, you go out, or you're, you're, you're in or out, you get a simultaneous call. So the engines are moving, the ladders are moving, and we're really always looking for the ambulance coverage to come in as well from different parts.
I will tell you that in my nine months on the town council, one of the things I've enjoyed the most is being the liaison to the fire department. And having served onboard an aircraft carrier, every single person on the carrier had to be trained for fire training because the biggest enemy to an air, to a naval ship is fire. And so I have a keen appreciation for having gone through firefighting training myself of the responsibilities that you and your crew endure every single day, and I thank you for the service you provide to Wakefield. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Appreciate that, Bob. You've been a good friend, you come in regularly, and you like to keep your, you know, your hand on the pulse of the department, and I appreciate that. I've spoken with you in the past, and you understand the service and the stresses and placed on the men and women of the Wakefield Fire Department, and do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherri, can I just ask, is, is there a FinCom liaison online?
No, Madam Chair, there is not.
Just, just checking. Counselor McLean?
Provisional Chief, Purcell.
Yes, sir.
Is a call, when you say 4,384, is a call, is that when a truck actually goes out, when a rig actually goes out?
Correct.
It's a lot.
Approximately 3,000 of those are medical aids.
Okay. So do you go out in tandem with ambulance on the medical?
On the medical, that's correct.
Okay. And I believe the police chief basically told us, if he's gonna hire somebody, it's kind of a year process.
Mm-hmm.
Because you've got a lot to do, and you've got to go with certain places and do certain things. Is your hiring process kind of a similar one-year kind of timeframe, or is it a little bit less, a little bit more?
It depends. It may not quite be as long as the police. I mean, we have to vet them, we have to go off the civil service list, so we have specific people that we have to hire from, and we interview, it's a long process, and, you know, once we pick someone, they have to go through the town medical, the psychologist, everything else, so it can be a long process. And on top of that, the fire academy, the Massachusetts State Fire Academy is constantly backed up. So, you know, for the first time in a long time, we're gonna be at full staff with 55 members, when the current firefighters, they're in the firefight academy now on, I believe, the 28th of April, but it's been a long time. It's, you know, with long-term injuries and other things, to get to full staffing so that we can see the savings in overtime, it's been a long haul. But to answer your question, you know, we try to vet as best we can. It's not quite a year, but it can be close to that with the wait for the academy.
That was, my follow-up question was, you know, have we been going a bit skinny? And if we're getting to full, you know, would that potentially have an impact on, because I'm looking at kind of a five-year pattern of overtime, and, you know, the highest number being 2022, and just wondering, you know, people do get hurt, people get sick, people are out.
Right.
And if we have a couple, instead of hiring two, should we have just hired four?
Right.
You know? Could actually be cost-effective, is what I'm saying.
I think when we finally get to, you know, full staffing, you're not gonna see quite as much overtime. You know, we did go to minimum manning of 11, it was 10, but it's relative because it was 12 and 10, now it's 13 and 11. So full staff is 13 per group, 11, 11 is the minimum staffing. But of course, if you have everybody there, it's gonna save money. You know, but we have collectively bargained agreements with vacation, with personal time, this sick time. You know, it's long-term injuries, it's military, it's retirements, those are the type of things that you can't predict, and we can't below, we can't go below that number, you know, it's just not safe. It's contractually obligated, and, you know, when my dad was a firefighter in the early 70s, late 60s, early 70s, we ran with 13. And that, that went away in the late 70s, and we finally got back there. Now the town's grown, maybe the population seems to stay the same, I don't quite know how that is, but it seems to, to me, we were going backwards, and, you know, the town administrator, you know, saw the vision, and, you know, thanked everybody that we went to 11. I mean, it's a huge difference. But when there's full staffing, to answer your question, Mr. McLean, is less overtime, but we can't predict it all the time.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief, and Kevin for this overview. Chief, sticking with the overtime piece, and I know that, as you alluded to, in 2022, that overtime was considerably higher, it was about 300, almost 300,000 more than
Correct.
than the norm. And I know you had done like a five-year average, but 2022 being such an outlier, it kind of skews the average, because I think the five years, like 646, but in reality, by and large, it's around 550 to 600.
Correct.
Give or take. You reference in what you submitted, the, that some of the overtime is being funded through federal dollars, correct?
Well, during that year it was. So we got about 200,000, it was COVID, I mean, that OT was up because of the COVID. I mean, it's never been 882,000. It was, like you said, and we did get supplemented, a little over 200,000 from the federal government. You know, COVID really affected things. Our runs, they were crazy, the amount of COVID runs that we did, and it affected everything, including our staffing, you know, there was 70% of the department went out at one point or another with, with COVID. So the overtime was up. Plus, we happen to have two or three retirements, and we had two long-term injuries at the same time. You're correct in saying that's an outlier.
Now, that year was 2022, that's why I'm just confused why that year was such an outlier of the 882, right?
So, you know, last year, it was, you know, COVID. COVID rolled right over for us, for the most part. And we did have, we had a couple of long-term injuries, and we had at least three retirements.
Yeah. So do you, so that, that federal funding then is, is not still there? Because I know you had mentioned about there was like an additional, it's like a three-year funding plan, right?
So, our manpower in the, in the, the SAFRA grant, you know, for the four new firefighters is 100% funded, if that's what you were getting at.
Right, it is, yeah.
So, to get us to 55, four of those firefighters, everything, including their benefits and salary, is 100% funded by the, the federal government through, I believe it's March 10th of 2024, started in 2021, which is huge, it's unheard of to get 100%. But again, the town made the commitment with all the growth and, you know, everything we see and all the runs we're doing, you know, it was time to get back to, to get the manpower where it needed to be, and I can tell you, it's, it's getting busier. To Mr. Vincent's point, if you do an average of about 7% increase in incident runs, I mean, by 2030, we're gonna be at 7,000 runs. What are we gonna do with 11 minimum and 13? I mean, it's, I have a list of the new construction and buildings here. I don't know if you want me to read them. It's over 2,200 new units. Put two people in each one, it's just getting busier and busier.
Well, I guess that, that's part of it too, when you were talking about this idea of, of overtime, and so basically, we're, like, from a taxpayer perspective, taxpayers are funding 51 positions, four positions are being funded by the federal grant, which goes through next year, so that's the best way to think about it. But also, I know you had mentioned about population, our population is up, like, close to 10%, if you look at census from 2010 to 2020, so it, that's not surprising. And if you look at 2020 to 2023, you, which, I don't know that we have exact numbers on population for that period, but I'd venture to say it's higher, to your point about these new, these new buildings that are opening or soon to be opening. So I do think that this is one of the costs of development, and it raises with police too, that we have to think about the sort of infrastructure improvements that need to be made in order to keep pace with, you know, so, and I don't know if, if there's a formula or ratio right now of, you know, one firefighter per X number of residents or households, or whatever the case might be, but I think we should look at that, because I think it's entirely possible that we may, you know, if, back in 2010, when our population was, was, you know, about 25,000, now I think we're over 27 and change, I think we need to look at that to make sure that we're still, you know, pairing appropriately.
Correct, and the business population during the day is substantially higher than that.
And taller buildings, I mean, you know, like, there's a lot of other considerations. I think about 13 years ago versus, again, where we are today, there's a lot of taller buildings, bigger buildings, it's a different, different environment, I would imagine.
No question. I mean, there are NFPA standards on response times and manpower, if I read them to you, they're substantially higher. We're very fortunate in Wakefield, we, we run with, you know, with enough people, it's getting busier, I believe we're going to have to run with more, there's no question if you just do the numbers. With the infrastructure, I mean, we're, our admin staff is straight out, and the men and women are straight out, I mean, they really are. I've been here, I'll start my 27th year, March 18th, and we were just under 2,000 runs, and, you know, we're pushing 4,500 easy. It's almost March 1st, we've, we'll hit 700 in the first two months, and we're just gonna keep going. But again, you know, Mr. Mayo has worked with us, you, you people have worked with us, the increase is really, it's huge for us. The third man on that ladder truck, man and woman on that ladder truck, and we're able to run, you know, simultaneous calls, you know, because it happens constantly. Engine two will be out, engine one will be out, ladder one will be out, all at the same time, going to different places, and, you know, part of that overtime too, you know, we have people still in the military, they get called out. There was a serious fire in Stoneham the other day, so our engine two arrives just after Stoneham arrives with a full crew. By the way, they made a rescue, if you read about that. Our engine two company went to the rear of the building and assisted Stoneham, and they, they rescued that gentleman. Our acting deputy chief arrived at the same time. We have to call engine company back to fill that. We're not gonna run short in town, we have to hire back. That, that's partly overtime, and that happens, you know, a lot too. We provide mutual aid, and we get it back, it's reciprocal, it's part of the metro fire system, and that, that plays heavily into overtime as well.
I do think we need to look at that and just do a real comprehensive analysis to make sure that we keep pace.
Absolutely.
But also, you know, to your point, I do wonder if there are more opportunities to be able to bring on more staff that ultimately would result in less in the way of overtime expenditures, and net, net save, save us, you know, something, you know, in the long run, because it's a consideration here.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be willing to work, to work with you, and to, to go through all the standards and devise different types of plans. You know, I've done it myself, Chief Sullivan has done it as well, you know, we're well aware of staffing needs and where it's headed. You know, we've talked about other stations, we talked about increasing manpower, adding engines, it's, the infrastructure's growing, so it's needed, it's a, it's a, it's a busy town.
I think it's important analysis for, for example, the ZBA, and when we're working with developers, especially the larger projects, and making sure that their contribution to the town is taking into account things like this, men and women power of the department, because that's, that's a built-in cost that is going to continue to be ours to shoulder well after the developers left town, so thinking about ways in which we can structure.
I, I think that, you know, there should be an impact fund, if you, if you would. Talked about it with Mr. Mayo in the past, I know that some of these large developers have supplemented in some way the betterment of the town, but I think with the increase in all the incidents, police and fire, you know, you have to increase public safety. It's not just an insurance policy, I mean, the numbers are there for both forces. You know, we just put in for a pumper in capital, by 2030, we're gonna need two more pumps and a ladder truck. Substantial. If we need more staffing, I think, you know, these developers need to be approached, there needs to be type, an impact fund towards public safety, and there are other ways to get there as well, too. Federal grants, we just finished the grant, season just closed out, I applied for a substantial amount in AFG, equipment grants, you know, we'll see how it goes. We always get something, but we, you know, we have to continuously pursue that avenue. But I do like the idea of an impact fund.
Yeah. Thank you, I apologize for taking so much time.
No, it was
No, thank you.
It was good ideas, I think, Steve, you know, we, we started this conversation at the tri board meeting every fall, I think it's a good thing to explicitly look at new development, and then our public safety, social services, like, as, Counselor Dubrowski is right that we got the new census numbers, but I don't know if we could get, you know, I don't think I want to wait another 10 years to get those numbers, so if we could get, you know, an increase over the next couple of years, but we have some big projects going, including, you know, a new vocational school, and I want to know how that factors into everything, so something to just think about, and would love to learn more about a potential impact fund. Counselor Chines?
You know, thank you, I, I think actually, Provisional Chief, you covered a lot of, you know, my questions and your responses to my colleagues. You know, just an observation, I think, obviously, you know, we've kind of all struggled with the overtime budget every year, and, you know, there's a part of me that looks at the 580,000 that's proposed and thinking, is that actually enough? You know, just given, it feels like every year, you know, I, I almost look at the reserve fund, or the, you know, the reserve fund transfers that we do and feel like, you know, by and large, those are fire overtime. It sounds like, I mean, what's encouraging to me is that, you know, this is the first time, at least in my memory, on the council or on finance committee where we actually will be fully staffed.
Correct.
At 54 as of the date, which is incredible, and really give you and Chief Sullivan a lot of credit for, for getting us to that point, because I know it hasn't been easy. So I'm, I'm hopeful that because of that, and because of, you know, just some of the, you know, sort of bad luck that we've had over the last few years with some long-term medical leaves and so forth, that, you know, that this may be the year that we've actually budgeted appropriately for overtime, but, you know, we'd just ask, you know, you and Chief Sullivan and, and Mr. Gill to just kind of keep an eye on that, because I, I do feel that, you know, as much as I'd love to find ways to reduce overtime over the long term, I also want to make sure that we're budgeting appropriately for it, so that, you know, we don't find ourselves in a position year in and year out where, you know, there's a gap that we're trying to fill.
Absolutely, point well taken, Councilman Chines. We, we do, hypovigilant on it, I mean, I go through our personnel online every single day, you know, contractually obligated, you have your personnel, you have your vacation, and I think what, what the board does need to, to remember is, you know, we're one of the few departments that has the minimum staffing requirement, and that's, that's what it is. Look, they see the overtime, they, they assign overtime to it, but, you know, we have to run with that amount, and sometimes that number looks crazy because of that, when in fact, you know, we need to, we need to be at those, those personnel levels.
Oh, and please don't take my question as any indication that, you know, I think that the money is not, you know, I absolutely recognize that, you know, we're, we're spending it appropriately. It's, it's more just making sure from a budgetary standpoint that if we think, you know, the run rate is gonna be, you know, 650,000, that we actually budget that amount in the future.
Correct.
And not some amount less than that in the hopes that we, we don't spend as much. But again, it sounds like we've got some, you know, some tailwinds this year that, that will be helpful, which is, is great, and, you know, certainly look forward to welcoming our, our new firefighters in a couple of months.
We look forward, I'm really anticipating the, the graduation, you know, in spring, and we'll be at full staff, I can't wait.
That's great, well, early congratulations to that, because again, I know that's been a long time coming.
New, new appointees, William Caron and Christopher Hagan are in the academy right now, so we look forward to getting them fully onboard. Thank you.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Um, I don't really have any specifics on the budget, but I just want to say, especially now knowing kind of the, the stress and the level of calls that you're getting, the fact that you are still constantly present in our community, you know, kids walk by and they look at the fire trucks and they're invited in to see them, and you're in the schools, and your firefighters are always in town and very friendly, and I just think that says a lot about this department, and even more so that you're dealing with all of the growth and all of the, you know, there's a lot of mental health stress and a lot of, it would be pretty easy, I think, to become insular and to just say, I'm just gonna do my job and do that, and you don't. Like, you are out there and you're in the community, you know, you're, you're at the, when we close the lake, you're, you're out there, you're visible, and I just really thank you for being an important part of the community.
We appreciate that, thank you so much for the kind words. Our men and women are really dedicated, they're really, they love the community, we're out there, it's, it's more than a job, it really is, I know that might be a little bit cliche, but, you know, we're at the games, we're at the fields, we're at the common, you know, we gotta get out there. There's nothing like walking downtown, being with everybody and just, you know, and it's really important to know the area, know your districts, know your streets, know your people, you know, and know what the community, you know, what the situations that could come up, but thank you so much.
It's noticed, thank you.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Sir, could I just ask finally, educational incentives or training incentives, I don't know if this is better for you, Chief, or, or Kevin, or Steve, do any of these impact positively our premiums for, say, workers' comp? For instance, if we meet certain thresholds or requirements, are there any, you know, like incentive reduction, you know, like a?
I don't know of any, no, so the educational incentives for us, you know, they're based on associates, bachelors, masters, and there's different types of training, and they're all figured in. I would not be, I, I have not heard of that, if we meet any, you know, specific breaks for that, Kevin may know.
I don't believe so, but we, we do have John Spennello coming on with the workers' comp budget, that may be a good question for him.
I think one thing the training does do is have, you know, lessen injuries.
Right.
Well, trained.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, and so logically, workers' comp should then presumably take into account, you would assume, because the likelihood would presumably reduce, right?
They're out on 111F anyway, so, yeah. They're not covered in workers' comp.
That's right.
Police and fire are, because they are, it's a different.
Yeah, you're right.
It would be nice if we could make that nexus, but we pay as we go there.
Yeah, that's true. Well, again, the number of calls is incredible, it's staggering, and the work that your department does is phenomenal in light of that, so thank you for, for your service.
Appreciate that, we're trying to keep up, we do the best job we can every day, and we thank you for supporting us, really, everybody has really supported the fire department since I've been there, again, my 27th year. Chief Sullivan is grateful, I know he is, and it means a lot to have the backing of the council and the townspeople. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, excuse me, move to approve the fire department budget for fiscal year 2024 as proposed.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven, zero, unanimous. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate the support. Thanks. Thanks, Kevin.
Moving on, budget six, be the animal inspector.
The animal inspector's budget, we're recommending that this budget be level funded for fiscal '24. Man expenses within this budget, contractual services, $37,500. This is for our contracted animal control duties that we, we contract out, and also for vet services, undersundry charges, $1,500, which is the dog pound fee, and it was $3,000 a couple of years ago, and we are now splitting that cost with Redding. The total budget request for fiscal '24 is $40,600.
Steve, anything to add?
No, I just want to say that we did, a few years ago, move No, I just want to say that we did a few years ago move this to completely contract oriented. So it's per call. There is an on-call fee for the weekend, but we split that with Redding. It's worked out very well. Both of our animal inspectors are approved by the state, so they've gone through the education program and I have their certificate. So it's a nice budget savings.
We like that word.
I know.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin or Steve?
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayo. Is this something, you know, as we think about other areas where we've had kind of regionalization, we've brought in other communities? Is this another area where there's an opportunity or, you know, is this something where Redding in Wakefield is kind of a, a good territory for someone to cover?
I think that, you know, we could consider with some other communities, but I think then we're going to have to add more staff. I think we're almost at the saturation for this.
Got it.
But it's something worth looking at.
Great. Thank you.
Steve, do we have to redo the agreement with Redding on this?
It's probably coming up.
Okay. I don't remember signing it recently.
June 30th, 2024 expires.
Okay. We've got some time.
We've got some time.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes. Move to accept the animal inspector budget for fiscal 2024 as proposed.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I, seven, zero unanimous. Great. Thank you. Budget '24, parking.
Next budget is the parking clerk's budget. We're recommending that the fiscal '24 budget, I'm sorry, the fiscal '24 budget be decreased $209 over the current fiscal year. Kenny Stake, the former animal control officer, handles the responsibilities for this department. Also, Mike Noseller is the part-time hearing officer. The personal services increased $341 to, to a salary increase. Contractual services decreased $500. We zeroed out the printing and bonding line item because the tickets are now being printed through the handheld devices. We also reduced materials and supplies by $50 based on both prior year and current year trends. The total budget request for fiscal '24 is $12,573. And I, I just want to note that this, this department does collect revenue between $40,000 to $50,000 a year.
Steve, anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm just going to say that, you know, when you go to the registry, not you, but when someone goes to the registry of motor vehicles to either register a car or to renew their license, and they have an outstanding parking ticket in Wakefield, and they can't do their registration of their car or they can't renew their license, boy, are they angry when they call. And thank God there are these people for them to talk to and not me and not, not Sherry in our office, because it's not our fault you didn't pay your bills. I have some great stories that'll be in my book about people that have come in and have multiple, multiple issues. So it's, it's a really good system. Sherry manages the online system with them, and I think that's worked out pretty good. Sherry, the payments?
Yeah. Yeah, it's working out great.
They also handle appeals. So if there's an appeal there, first, obviously.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Dombrowski?
Any department that is revenue generating is AOPMI books. Need to find a few more of those.
Counselor Tynes?
Just a question. What, what has the trend been on the revenue side over the last couple of years? I mean, obviously, you know, we changed our parking enforcement work a few years ago. COVID hit and, you know, just the, the way people used kind of downtown where we're doing parking enforcement change. I'm just curious if we've seen any trends and patterns in terms of, you know, what we've collected, the type of tickets where, you know, we're issuing, things like that.
I would say that since fiscal year 19, which was before COVID, okay, exploded in '20 from revenue when we added the.
The enforcement.
The enforcement. Now it's kind of leveled out because people know that they can't, you know, that they shouldn't park where they shouldn't be parking. So it seems to be in the $40,000 a year range for revenue. The last couple of years, since COVID, have been pretty steady, so.
And are these generally mostly tickets for, you know, overstaying time limits?
Yes, mostly that. Very few, seems like very few handicap spaces.
Very few.
Very few. We used to get a few of those and.
I think it was like one in like the last fiscal report.
Which was really good. We should be happy about that. We shouldn't be upset.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, yeah, but it's mainly overstaying and it's, and it sadly, it is mainly, you know, unfortunately, people that feel that they should park in front of their employee, employment position all day and, you know, not walk if you walk. So that's, you know, we have those, those timeframes for the clientele to come in.
I will say the four-hour spots downtown are always open. So if you're, you know, going downtown and spending time at the library, if you're going to be there for a few hours, that's a great option.
And they go off at night, too, so you can just have a nice evening and don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes. Move to approve the parking, parking clerk budget for fiscal year 2024 as proposed.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? I, seven, zero unanimous. Great. Budget '26, Health and Human Services Department, and we are joined by Director Chow.
Yes. I'll, I'll give a quick overview and then I'll turn it over to Anthony. The Health and Human Services, we are requesting an increase of $6,816 over the current fiscal year, fiscal '24. The increase breaks down under Personal Services. The increase is $12,984, which includes contractual and negotiated increases. I do want to note something on page five. The health inspector's salary from fiscal '23 to '24 looks like a large jump, but the fiscal '23 salary was not a full year salary. That position was hired in October. Also, I think last year we, we had talked about using ALBA funds heavily in fiscal '23 and then start to wean down over the next couple fiscal years, '24 and '25. So in fiscal '24, we're recommending that we use $50,000 in ALBA funds versus $145,000 that we use in fiscal '23. And we are also offsetting this budget, the salary line item, by $100,000 from the opioid settlement funds that we've been getting and will continue to get. I, I believe it's a 10-year schedule, Steve?
Yes.
Under contractual services, the decrease is $6,594. The big decrease there of $7,500 is because Stonem is now included in our agreement, the municipal agreement that have come, come on board, which therefore lowers our costs. Then under Materials and Supplies, we've had small decreases of $141 and a small increase in the mosquito control line item. The total budget request for fiscal '24 is $389,892. And I do want to note, we do collect revenue here also. And this is also between $40,000 to $50,000 a year with various health permits.
Great, thank you. We have a presentation.
Yes. I want to say thank you, everybody. I'm also joined by Candace Linehan, the board, the Chair of the Board of Health. She's online tonight. So I want to say thank you. And I'll go through my presentation to kind of give everybody an update on everything we've been doing. So one of the kind of three main pillars of the Health and Human Services Department falls into environmental health. And so this time last year, I came to everybody and I tried to explain, you know, our need for a number of inspections per year. And so based on the FDA risk-based inspection schedule, we have, we have an obligation to rank restaurants based on risk level, depending on what food they serve and the risk of foodborne illness. And so being able to hire a full-time inspector in September has been, has been great for us. We're actually, we have 285 routine inspections. That doesn't include re-inspections required. But as of this time last year, we had only completed 85, and by now we have completed 126. We're well on our way to completing the minimum routine food inspections for this fiscal year. And so we've also been able to, and I'll let Candace elaborate after the presentation, but we've also been able to, with this increased capacity, work on education more with our retailers. We've, we've seen an increased number of businesses as well this year. So we want to make sure that education's our top priority in terms of food safety and how to handle food properly. We've had 22 food re-ins, actually, we've had 26 now since this presentation. We've had 26 food re-inspections completed, and these, you know, vary based on severity of the issue. So we've been able to address these in a timely manner. And we've had free, five pre-operational inspections this year. So new places opening up in Wakefield, which is great to see new businesses coming in. In environmental health, it also includes housing complaints and other nuisance complaints. And so we've had 144 complaints since June of 2020, June of 2022. Thank you. So one of the things we wanted to make sure we're able to kind of separate out is we've, we have a senior environmental health specialist in Aaron and myself. The two of us tackle housing. Housing is generally pretty, pretty involved, multiple re-inspections. So being, having this increased capacity of a new inspector, we've, we've been able to delegate work between myself and Aaron tackling housing for the most part and this inspector focusing mostly on food. Just breaking down some of the numbers, housing actually is one of our, is the majority of our complaints. And 70% of those housing complaints are in buildings with 10 or more units. And so just looking at future development, just like fire, when during their presentation, we want to keep an eye on new developments and how that impacts our capacity as well. We've had, you know, a great opportunity to work with our residents here in Wakefield to kind of provide education as well as resources for them. But as we have more people moving into Wakefield, we're going to, we're going to be seeing an increase in need as well. And 13% of those were kind of higher level complaints, hoarding, fire and other ones. So those are more kind of involved cases and those take a lot of our time. And so we want to make sure that we're engaging all of our partners, Mystic Valley Elder Services, one of them. We want to make sure that we're engaging all parties, that we can provide as many resources as possible. And the next two major categories are trash and rodents. And so trash, we see about 10% of our complaints from there. Our focus is mostly on education and enforcement. And rodents, we're fortunate to be working with our Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition. We are able to kind of pool our resources in terms of translation services for different materials, working with different towns to see best practices and to limit rodent exposure. And as Kevin said, we are a revenue generating department. This year alone, we're going to be, our total, total fees collected in fiscal year '22, we were at $44,000. We just conducted kind of a fee schedule survey. We compared ourselves to other towns and kind of made sure that we were evaluating the amount of time we were spending on different permitting processes and different inspections involved with different permits, as well as the increased number of permits we've had. We've had an increase in food permits, dumpster permits, as well as farmer's market. So we've seen an increase as well as bodywork establishments. So these increases, we wanted to make sure our fees matched the amount of work that was put into that time-wise. So we're increasing some of our permit fees to kind of match that. So we're expecting roughly $6,500 to $7,000 in increased revenue for the next year. Permit, permit season is always very busy for us. We have an amazing administrative staff that takes the time out to help every, every business and every person applying. If they have any questions, they can help them through those processes. We also have a great IT department here that also supports us as well, providing us support and open gov. Just to go through briefly the community health trends, our partners are, our partners at Melrose Wakefield have provided us a new community health needs assessment. It's always good to keep an eye on these. Our top three causes of death have changed recently. So we have heart disease, complications of dementia and lung cancer. And so seeing these changes, we kind of have to shift our approach in terms of education and outreach to our community. Some of the concerns we're seeing, substance use concerns, so in Wakefield compared to surrounding areas, we've, we see that we are above, above the average in Massachusetts by more than 5%. So it's, it's a concerning figure and we want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. We work closely with our schools. Some of you actually know of our school programs and are involved in that. We want to make sure our education reaches there. Other services, the SNAP gap since the last three years, we've seen an increase actually in the amount of Wakefield residents who are eligible for SNAP but are not enrolled. And so we're actually greater than 5% of that in Massachusetts. And so we want to see our services translate into decreasing that SNAP gap, making sure that existing resources are leveraged for our residents. We're also seeing increased cancer rates and social service needs. And so these, these higher rates of cancer and social service needs, I think these are essential. If we can kind of bridge that gap post Melrose Wakefield, their kind of services, we want to extend the education past, past that and make sure everybody has access to that, which dovetails nicely into public health nursing. And so we have a new position, the .5 FTE Wakefield Public Health Nurse that works closely with our senior public health nurse shared between the three communities. Sandra Brown has been working very closely with Melissa to provide kind of an increased level of service. Some of those are weekly blood, blood pressure clinics and wellness clinics at the McCarthy Senior Center. We've seen an increase in homebound vaccinations and wellness visits. We've also seen kind of an increased capacity to, to provide health promotion and disease prevention. So this year, we saw, an example was we saw an increase in tick-borne diseases. We see, you know, some climate shifts and so we're seeing, you know, later in the season, more tick, tick-borne illnesses being spread. And so having this extra public health nurse time, she's able to consult with people in the community, kind of talk about best, best practices and provide the latest research and work with our communications department to get those out there. Each year, we're seeing good, great engagement with our flu clinics and our COVID clinics. So we're, we're fortunate to have this three-town collaboration. Our regional, regional clinics are very successful. We're able to reach a lot of different people. And so we're able to provide many opportunities for people to get their vaccinations each year. Having the extra .5 FTE public health nurse has been absolutely essential. She's been able to provide drop-in clinics this year in, in Town Hall or actually in Five Common. So a lot of our employees are taking advantage of that. Many community members find that to be very convenient for them. They can come in during their lunch break, maybe after work, they're able to drop in and get their vaccination. So we're, we're increasing our reach within the community, providing the vaccinations. And each year, it's very hard to predict, but we have a different communicable disease caseload. This year, we had, we had a, a few Ebola cases that we were tracking. You know, it keeps, keeps our work fresh every year. But, yeah, so we have Ebola, you know, if it's, you know, we have monkey pox or MPOX. We also had just several other diseases. We had babesiosis. Just, just seeing an uptick in flu and we had RSV earlier in the school year. Just all of these, you know, these reportable diseases, having the increased capacity to reach out to people, provide ongoing education and kind of doing contact tracing when needed is important. The goals for us in the next fiscal year are to increase health promotion and community education. One of the areas that we see growth potentially in is reaching populations that historically may not know of services or have a hard time accessing them. We have a great opportunity to work with our ESL, ESL group from the schools. If we're able to kind of work with them on different events, we're able to increase our presence in that community as well as providing translation services as well. Our homelessness population, as well as kind of restructuring some of the ways we, we perform our permits, our permitting system, including camp inspections, which are, for those of you who don't know, a very, very time-consuming process. Every week, we get new camp participants. And so we have to review immunization forms, we have to review ratios for the counselors to students. So a lot of these different processes before, when we were just kind of, you know, able to manage with the amount of staff we had, now we're able to kind of evaluate our processes and improve them as we go. And another large piece of our department, Social Services, I want to say thank you to Town Council for supporting that. Last year, Jason Stone has come before Town Council a couple of times now. He was hired in September, has been absolutely essential to everything we do. I think we've just surpassed 100 households served. And so as you can see here, some of the breakdown, our initial service inquiry, a lot of, the majority of folks are looking for food and security assistance and energy and fuel assistance, which was a, a great surprise to us actually, as well as housing assistance. which was a, a great surprise to us actually, as well as housing assistance. Originally, we had, we had thought that a great partnership would be between us and Wakefield Food Pantry, which is able to reach a lot of people in Wakefield, but that's actually worked out even better than we had hoped. And so we're able to provide Jason's time to do the intake. And so when we do the intake, we're also able to screen for other services they may need, and kind of become a one-stop shop for them. So we can do very effective follow-up. Another great byproduct of that partnership has been the Energy and Fuel Assistance Project. We've worked very well with Wakefield Gas and Light, been able to provide our program to many residents that, you know, maybe have a hard time filling out paperwork, there's a lot of steps to keep track of, you know, interfacing with all these oil companies. So having that increased capacity, having Jason there to work with them on that is very, is very important for us. As well as housing assistance, housing is always going to be an issue. I think housing is on the forefront for a lot of communities to address. And so all of those processes where you're applying for a lottery for somewhere, or Section Eight vouchers, you know, those are very time-consuming processes, and so not everybody's able to do that, and Jason's able to help many people through that. Our referral sources, as you can see, Wakefield Food Pantry is the highest percentage. We also get a, a good deal of them from Wakefield Gas and Light for our program, and food, you can see School Department and our department internally, from inspections also make up a good, a good amount of those. And so we're able to refer services to Jason, and he's able to do that follow-up that before we were just kind of piecing together, you know, with the, with the amount of knowledge we have, but with his background in social services, we're able to do a better job of. We're also able to break down some of the demographics of the residents served. As you can, as you can see, we also have, we also have an interesting trend here. So this position really was tapped for, you know, the positions between, ages between, you know, after school age and then before senior, senior age kicks in. We have that population here that, that required services before. And so we have a great support system in the schools, and we have a great support system at the Council on Aging. As you can see right here, the age range of sixty-one to eighty-one plus makes up a decent amount of our percentage here and clients served. And that's actually a testament to working with our Council on Aging, to provide kind of multi, multi-level resources. We have grandparents raising children, we have a different pop, unique populations, unique settings. So we're able to kind of work with them, not provide, not provide overlap, but able to provide a continuum of services between all age groups. We're also seeing an, an increasing number of languages being spoken. And so we're hoping to kind of increase our capacity. We've, we've provided pocket talks through some of our grant programs, helping to bridge that language barrier. But also, we're, we're looking to increase our language translation capacity. We work with Melrose Wakefield and other, other entities as well. And just, I thought it might be helpful for town council to understand, we have a couple of kind of case studies, just kind of typical, typical referral sources and clients served. Just to kind of give an example of how, of how we're able to provide different resources, when they come to us with one question, we're able to kind of provide multiple resources. We have folks coming in for assistance with mass health applications, with SNAP benefits inquiry, or no heat or broken furnace. We're then able to connect them further to resources as mass hire, filling out paperwork there, assisting with SNAP benefit applications, enrolling in food pantry, immigration support, winter clothing for children. We also have heating assistance, Medicare and prescription benefits coverage. We're also able to provide people connections to Mystic Valley Elder Services, behavioral health support, and securing rental income. These are just some of the examples of resources that we're able to tap into and that Jason is getting to know very well within town. And so we're able to leverage both those resources and resources regionally that are And just a quick update on the Fuel Assistance Program. Thank you to town council for approving our use of the ARPA funds for this project. We've been able to work with LIHEP and Good Neighbor on this. It's been a cross-department collaboration, emergency management, IT, communications, and accounting have been working very closely with us to set up an application system. It was stood up in the matter of weeks. It was, it was a great effort between everybody. I believe we're up to seventy applications now. We're working with fifteen different heating oil delivery companies, and we've been working with Wakefield Gas and Light primarily. And now we're starting to see that outreach pay off, where Wakefield Gas and Light and other oil companies are able to talk to their customers and say, this program exists for Wakefield residents. And so now we're starting to get calls from, from the, more calls from their customers saying, oh, I heard about this program, I'd love to enroll. And so we're able to get more engagement that way. So we've, we've kind of broken through, and this program has been, has been a huge success for us. And the last section here, we're going to talk a little bit about behavioral health and substance use. And so Catherine, Catherine Dingra has been, you know, has been here for many years and has been working on this tirelessly to kind of build up our key partners and to make sure that we're able to leverage our Drug Free Communities Grant, which is coming to an end this year. Kind of being able to bridge the gap between school and education, providing parent university. An example could be the Molton Fitness Court that was put in. We have senior night, we have marijuana impaired driving programs, we have ESL Family Night. We've been able to work across many disciplines to provide education and other resources through the coalition. Wake Up is a great, it's a great program. Our youth action team and our youth councils have been an amazing asset to the town. So we've been able to leverage a lot of that grant-writing ability, and a lot of these successful grants that we've written are now being able to, you know, benefit Wakefield as well as leveraging other grants from our, our regional partners that are, that are helping our schools as well. And here, the new position that we put in, the Assistant Director position last year, has been really helpful for us. So Catherine manages the Human Services portion of the staff, as well as directs Wakefield, the Wake Up Coalition. She's able to coordinate collaborations between different town departments. Continual grant writing and reporting, we're currently writing for an extension, kind of an extension grant to Drug Free Communities Grant right now. She's, she's been very, very helpful for us and the Health Department, doing evaluation analysis. So we've been able to pull these numbers together, all these metrics that show what impact we've made in the community. And she's also been very helpful providing new programs and oversight for those, such as a Fuel Assistance Program, and she continues to be the Wakefield Youth Council Advisor. And this is just a summary of the grant initiatives and programs that we work on. We just recently received year three of the Tufts Medicine, Melrose Wakefield Grant. That's an ongoing grant between Melrose and Wakefield Health Departments. We've been able to provide a lot of programming through there. We've been working with the Alzheimer's Association. We continue to, to provide tobacco compliance, retailer education and policy work with Maureen Busby. We continue to support the work of Wakefield Alliance Against Violence. We're an active participant in the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition that provides a lot of our funding for inspectors' works, for inspector work. And we're also benefiting from the Community Health Inclusion Index funding, which was a grant that was awarded to Melrose, Wakefield, Stonemont, Lynnfield, written in Melrose. But we're able to partner on that grant and provide kind of a health inclusion survey within town for different resources. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Your board chair, Candace Lenahan, I think is on the Zoom.
I am. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, now we can see you and hear you.
Excellent. Excellent. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Apologies for not being there in person this evening. But I just kind of wanted to maybe amplify Anthony's wonderful presentation. I know he got into a lot of the great work we've been doing. It's been wonderful to kind of get, you know, a little bit apart from COVID and do some of the good work that we all really got into this to do. So I thought maybe I would just talk a little bit more specifically about some of the rules. And I'll start with the Assistant Health Director. Like Anthony said, Catherine has been supporting Anthony and really working to maintain the grants that fund our department's initiatives, compensate our staff. The longest-running, which will be coming to a close this year, is our Drug Free Communities Grant, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and that supports parent university, that supports school diversion programs, and coalition member training, the youth action team leaders, substance use prevention coordinators. So lots of, lots of the stuff, the really important stuff we want to do is funded by these important grants. And without our Assistant Health Director with time specifically dedicated to that, we wouldn't be able to really get out and be with the community and do these great programs. Our Wakefield-specific health inspector has been really upping the game as far as keeping our food establishment safe. We've probably welcomed six to seven establishments into our meetings, and it's been great to kind of get to know these folks. And these meetings have been really constructive, educational, as Anthony mentioned, not punitive. You know, our intention when we invite establishments in is to review the health inspector's report, to, to talk about the findings, and then together to work on a plan to make any kind of changes. I think it's important that we support our local businesses, and it's also important that we support the employees at these establishments. Keeping them safe is sometimes a part of this that maybe isn't discussed quite as often, but it, it's very important. Food safety is also employee safety. Our environmental health specialist has been a fierce advocate for equitable living conditions and supporting all the residents, especially our residents in multifamily living situations. As Anthony mentioned, our public health nurse, our additional part-time public health nurse, has been able to take our nursing services beyond just vaccine clinics to employee wellness, to colorectal health awareness, continued blood pressure monitoring, and keeping track of communicable diseases in town. It's a busy job, being a public health nurse, and I think that having Sandra has been wonderful. It's really been able to, to do more, to do more, and, and to do, again, like I said, you know, the stuff that we really want to do, the stuff that makes Wakefield great, the stuff that makes people want to live here, the stuff that makes us want to do what we do. We've had robust vaccine clinics, well-attended, and really, folks at the Health Department have tried to meet people where they're at, offering flu clinics, COVID clinics, in lots of different settings, in different places, especially the employee clinic, you know, being able to vaccinate folks when they can get in there, because vaccinating is important. And so when folks have access, they're more likely to, to get those needed vaccines. And of course, our board, we are a three-member board. Each member of our board, myself included, does involve themselves outside of our advisory roles. Laurel Gorgo is the liaison to Wake Up. Elaine Silva leads our nursing team in public health best practices. I have been working with our youth action team to support later school start times. I'm also the medical consultant for Wakefield Public Schools. It's been wonderful to learn these, learn and kind of support these different ways that when I took this role, I never really imagined I would be doing. But, but that's the work, you know, that's, that's this wonderful work that, that gets us all excited. And I think there's more work to be done. As Anthony mentioned, our substance abuse rates here in Wakefield are higher than our neighbors, and we need to continue our initiatives to combat substance abuse and also support recovery. We do have a notable gap in our social services. Fifty-five percent of Wakefield residents who are eligible for SNAP benefits don't have them. And we can do better, we can do better than that. And I think we have, we have Jason, we have folks in position to help. I think we, we need to keep doing what we're doing. We need to let people know that these services are out there. We need to share this stuff with our community. I think this budget was judiciously put together. I think it reflects the work we do, the work we want to do, and I think it's important that we keep looking forward, you know? I think sometimes when we've been through a tough period, it's hard to look beyond. And I think we're perhaps, I don't want to sound too optimistic, but I, I am optimistic that we're going to be looking forward to doing new great things in Wakefield, and I think this budget can allow us to do that stuff. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Candace. Any questions, comments? Counselor Chimes?
Just a comment, and I, I thank you, you know, Director Choi and, and Chair Lenahan for, for speaking about this. I, I, you know, Candace, you, you said something that I think is really important, which is we need to tell people about the work that we're doing. And, you know, when I look at, you know, the, the panoply of responsibilities that the Health and Human Services Department has taken on, you know, and I look at the tremendous strides that we've made in such a short period of time, I mean, the inspectional numbers alone are, are just incredible. The, the work that Jason Stone is doing is, is great. I, I just want to highlight how important it is to make sure we get the word out, you know? It's great that we've done, you know, X number of housing inspections and, and work there. I suspect, though, that there are a lot of people that don't even realize that if they're having a housing issue or having an issue with their landlord, that, you know, the Health Department is, is a place for them to go. And so I, I hope that we can continue to spread the word. I, I think you've done, you know, just really incredible work in partnering with different organizations in town, whether it's the Food Pantry, or the schools, or, or Gas and Light. I hope we can kind of continue to find ways to make sure that we get the word out so that, you know, now that we've built this tremendous team, that, that people know that it's available for them, and they, that they know it's a place where they can seek help when they need it. So thank you for the great work that you do and for, for the presentation today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Counselor McLean?
Good evening. I spoke with Jason, and he indicated that there might be kind of a slowness to the approvals relative to the, some of the LIHEP applications. Have you, are you familiar with that? And if so, is there anything we can do, or is it kind of out of our hands?
Yeah. And I don't know if Steve has anything to add, but, I mean, we, we've been working, we actually reached out to Jason Lewis, he, our Senator Jason Lewis. He may know, you know, of some way to help us kind of find out what, what's going on in that process. I've heard that it's mostly a staffing issue there, just to keep up with that capacity. So it sounds like we're not the only community struggling with that. But, yeah, we're, we're looking into getting those approvals moved along, so.
Have we actually paid anything out yet from the ARPA funds?
I believe we have, yeah.
Ninety-five hundred, roughly.
Okay. Okay. And one other quick question is, you noted that you're getting complaints on rodents. Is that an uptick, or is that something you've seen in the past?
We've consistently seen these, these rodent complaints, I think, in the past. It's actually decreased slightly for us. I think working with the community, and we've done a great job of communication, so we've sent out a lot of communication on best practices, keeping lids on trash, you know, having people know that we exist so they can report seeing issues with trash out there, so we can address them quicker. I think it's more of a, it's more of a kind of working with the community, getting everybody involved, and making sure that they know that, there's a certain level of expectation when it keeps, you know, it comes to having dumpsters and trash, maintaining it in a way that's sanitary, so it prevents rodents. So I think that work has actually helped us decrease slightly some of the rodent calls we've gotten.
Good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Tabrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director, and, and Chairwoman. This has been very enlightening. On the Energy and Fuel Assistance Program, can you give a sense of, of what that process is, folks could, because as I understood it, it was, the intention was to exhaust any and all available resources at, at the state level or otherwise, and then, and then and only then would the, the town ARPA funds be utilized. Is that, is that how the process is going?
Yes. So they're supposed to, you know, our, our goal is to have them, if they qualify for state funding, then we would also provide them with ARPA funding as well. Generally, we want to make sure that, you know, in, in an emergency, they're not, you know, they're not in a pinch where they don't have enough. So, yes, the ARPA funds are utilized, maybe not as a last resort, but after they've qualified for state funding.
Okay. And Steve, am I correct, that ninety-five hundred dollars of what has been allocated as potential for this has been utilized today?
Right. And, and, and I think there's another, what, fifty or sixty applications at LEO waiting to get approved, so we can?
Which would be seven fifty apiece?
Which would probably be seven fifty apiece, yeah.
Okay. But that, and that, so in terms of getting a ballpark, we will have money returned or offsite that was allocated?
Yeah, we either, either or, we'll, we'll keep it in there, whatever the council wants for next, next round, yeah.
All right. And then demographically, I know you were talking a lot of, I've heard a lot of talk of landlords. Do we have a sense of how many residences in town are rental units as compared with owned by, you know, individuals or families?
Right. I don't have, I don't have a great.
I mean, like, like setting aside, obviously, like, like the bigger, new construction buildings, but, you know, obviously.
I don't think I have a great, a great guess as to how many there are right now. It's something that we can look into, we can work with building and zoning to kind of figure out those. We can also kind of look at our dumpster permits and kind of back calculate, you know, because three or more, three family or more units generally need a dumpster, so then we can, we can back calculate that as well.
All right. Yeah, I mean, that would be great, just to kind of get a sense, you know, orders of magnitude here, because, you know, I, I don't think of Wakefield as a heavy landlord community, as, like- heavy landlord community, like, say, a lot of more, sorry, urban areas are. But I maybe, maybe that's just a misperception that I have, you know, so I don't, I don't want to overemphasize what may be a smaller segment of our housing population, relatively speaking.
Yes.
And then the demographics obviously went by, you know, gender, age, you know, et cetera. Do we have, do you currently gather, or if not, can you gather information on what of the population served is veterans?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We can gather that data, and actually, we work closely with Karen Burke at the COA, who, you know, formerly was the Veteran, Veteran Services Officer. So, we're able to collect that data and kind of get a number for that. I don't have it on me right now, but.
No, I'm asking, but that is something that, so is that currently being gathered, or could you gather it going forward?
Yes, we could. I believe, I believe we have, we have numbers on that already, but.
Because I think one of the challenges that I see, and especially the veterans' budget, is that, is the outreach. And if you're already, you're talking about, you know, sixty to eighty-one plus, you know, it seems like a pretty big segment of the population. I would imagine a number of those certainly are veterans, too, so I'd like that opportunity to be able to not, to present to them not only maybe what, you know, are the obvious reasons they're coming to, to you, to talk about services, but instead understanding the full complement of services that might be available, especially for veterans, because that's, it's kind of tag teaming, if you will. I think that would be a really important opportunity for us to better utilize, you know, the funding that's been reserved for veterans and, you know, and the services that they need more specifically. That covers it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dennehy?
Thank you very much. That was a, that was a really great presentation. It was comprehensive, and I learned a lot about how busy your office is, so I think that the community will see all the work that you're doing. I just had a few questions for you. One question was, in terms of the calls that you get, and you said around different types of calls, can you tell me something like who, where do they call, who handles those calls, and can you take me through an example of when somebody calls and what role, what that process is until, you know, resolution?
Yeah, that's a good question. Maybe I'll pick a hard one, and I might stumble through this a little bit, but we'll try. So, one of the things we usually get are sometimes housing complaints. A pretty common example for us is maybe there's a trash complaint at a property. So, generally, that call comes directly to our administrative assistant, Cindy, who takes that call. Because she's been here for so long, she's already very well-versed. She's, most of the time been able to triage, you know, some of the more basic answers for people, you know, kind of give them resources. But for a situation like that, we would have Cindy take the call originally. She would then refer it either to myself, Erin, or if the food inspector's not at an inspection, they can also deal with it as well. We would look up the case to see if there's any prior, prior issues at the location, and if there are not, we would go out to that, we would go out to the location, we'd have education materials on hand, we would go and knock and say, you know, if they were there, we can just tell them, you know, we've received a complaint about this, is it okay if we do, if we perform an inspection, or we just try and see if there's an issue there? And if they're, if they're agreeable, then we will, then we'll go in and check on the conditions, you know, if it's a trash complaint, or if it's, if it's bird feeding, or if it's rodent conditions, then we can go and do, kind of do an investigation. And afterwards, we'll have a kind of one-on-one conversation with the homeowner, occupant, whoever is there, to kind of talk it through, say, you know, the reasons why, you know, this is an issue when it comes to, maybe it's bird feeding, you can contract rodents if you're not cleaning it up properly, that sort of thing. And so we'll usually follow it up with an order to correct if there's multiple items, and so we'll go back to the office, we'll write it up. Usually, the inspector or Cindy will help us send it out to the resident, and then we'll perform a follow-up. Usually, it's the same inspector. If not, we just pass the information along through Open Gov, our complaint tracking system and permitting system, and then somebody else will be assigned that case, we'll go back out, we'll do a follow-up. In some instances, it's not corrected in the timeframe that we provide, so we try to leave more material, we try to reach, you know, try and engage with the person and see, is there, are there extenuating circumstances, are there things that we can help with to get to the point where they need to be? But there are, you know, there's a fee structure associated with fines for housing code violations, and so we try to work with the person, but then we also, you know, you know, when it comes down to it, we do have to issue those fines. And so we continue to work with them, and I'd say the vast majority of residents in Wakefield are very compliant. Usually, we don't have to issue any fines, and if we do, it's usually a one-off, and they usually correct it, and they're good to go. Just to follow up on that, I think if it's a repeat kind of violation, I think it's, sometimes we need to, we need to engage other departments if it's more of like a structural issue, or we'll engage building department, we'll engage conservation if it's a concern about environmental health, bless you. So, I think we're, we're able to handle a lot of our complaints because we have a great team that already knows what to do, but we're also able to engage other departments if necessary.
Great, great.
And then if I may, Counselor, often if it's not able to be resolved, which, forgive me, it often is able to be resolved, we have them before the board. We'll invite folks before the board to have a discussion. And again, in almost every case that I've been part of, it goes well. People may not be happy, but they're civil and respectful, and I think that with the three members of the board and the health director together, we're usually able to talk, talk through something, to kind of discuss. Sometimes if, you know, if a fine is too much, we've been able to negotiate and work with, with folks about making a change. So, I feel like we've had some positive resolutions to that stuff in our hearings as well.
Great, thank you. One other thing is I really like that you noticed the health gaps, and you're using data to kind of, what I really like is using the data to strategically plan in terms of those things that you want to focus on in the future. And I saw a lot about community education and, you know, health promotion campaigns. Are you, in terms of those campaigns that you're doing, are you doing those, are those going to be funded through grants? And then also, what role are you doing in terms of working with the state on existing campaigns that exist and adopting them for Wakefield?
Yeah, so, that's a good question. So, grants are, grants are, you know, inevitably are a very big part of our department. We have a very robust team that continuously looks for opportunities, and we don't just look, you know, we just don't look for grants for the sake of looking for grants, we look for ones that will be beneficial to Wakefield, just based on what we need. In terms of leveraging existing state grants, actually, because we have so much experience on staff already, Catherine's been doing this for forever, and, you know, having, having some partnership regionally as well, we, I've actually had a chance to work with a board of health member in Stonem, who used to work for, who used to work for DMH for thirty-plus years, just an example of somebody who has worked with the state for a long time. So, they've, they've been able to kind of give us insight on some of the processes, some of the grants that they have, some support systems they have. So, kind of both in-house as well as regionally, I think we've had a lot of opportunity to partner with them and leverage some kind of existing state programs. Another direct connection that we have to the state is through Maureen Busby, who's our tobacco compliance officer. She's, she's always constantly providing education and looking for potential grants to help, you know, us provide education to the retailer, but also help retailers understand, you know, what's expected of them, and to, you know, education first rather than penalty first. So, yeah, we've had a great connection with the, with the state as well as other communities to leverage existing resources.
Great, and I should, one final question was, the, you said that there is a marijuana impaired driving campaign?
Yes.
Okay, so can you tell me, I know that the state, when marijuana, recreational marijuana became legalized, the state was mandated to do a campaign, and are you doing your own campaign, or are you working with the state on that? And can you just tell me a little bit about it?
Yeah, so we're actually, we're actually working with the state on that. We actually had, and I, forgive me, I forgot his name, but we actually had a previous youth council member, I believe, that spearheaded that campaign for us in Wakefield. So, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't just Wakefield, a lot of communities participated, but he was able to help bring kind of marijuana impaired driving to the forefront as part of his project when he was here. And so he was actually named at the State House as part of the team to help bring this, bring this to fruition. And so we've been working with the state to provide education. They provided us a lot of resources to bring to the schools, to then kind of, you know, what's the best way to reach our youth about marijuana impaired driving, so we've been able to leverage that.
So, specifically targeted to a younger population, not general?
Correct.
Might want to expand it, expand.
Oh, yes, we're hoping to expand that program as well.
I did, I worked for the state and did the initial round of research with community people. There's a lot of people who drive high and see nothing wrong with it, so I think that work needs to be continued at all levels. So, I would encourage it to go beyond just the younger audience and expand that, because I think that's a major public health need that.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I think, I think that's one of the areas that I could see growth in for the next year. We also have, we also have an increased focus this year for alcohol as well, alcohol awareness. We just had a state report come out in December, had a great chance to speak at the State House and to hear others speak about, you know, how, unfortunately, Massachusetts as a whole is falling kind of behind on that.
Yes, I saw that article, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's one of those opportunities, since we have a great team here, and we have great support from town council and other, and other bodies within Wakefield. I think we have a great opportunity to provide further education on that issue as well as marijuana.
Do you do social norming campaigns, is that the general campaign delivery that you have used?
Yeah, so, working with Liz Parsons, who used to work for our region here, she's still, she's still, she's still a local here. She is actually, I believe, the director of alcohol policy nationally, and so she's been able to help us with social norm campaigns. We're also going to be planning potentially some town halls around kind of education, especially for policy, for policymakers, that, you know, this may be not their full-time job, but I think it's important for us to create further engagement with the community on kind of dangers of alcohol, especially with the latest data that came out.
Yeah, great, thank you so much. This was really informative and helpful, so I appreciate it. The only thing I would add is that in any of these campaigns that you're doing is, and I think that, I think I did see that, is the evaluation piece, and then just keeping us posted in terms of the progress that you're making, and, you know, what are the, what you're seeing for results.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Just following up on the alcohol piece, because it definitely has been some disturbing data. I thought that we were going to look at our alcohol policies, and we're the alcohol licensing board, and has there been any progress on that?
Yeah, I think, I think we started looking at them probably a few months ago now. I don't think we've made too much progress on that, because I think with the wind down of drug-free communities, it's been a lot of kind of work to make sure that a lot of our programs remain sustainable. So, I believe once, once we've got, once we've got that kind of wrapped up, we'll make sure to kind of push that forward again. April's Alcohol Awareness Month, so I think it'll be a good time for us to kind of leverage that and get back into evaluating our policies. I've also spoken with Liz Parsons, who is willing to kind of be our technical assistants here.
Yeah, she's an amazing resource in Wakefield.
Yes.
The other part of that was Lieutenant Anderson was going to be working on that, and he was at the FBI Academy.
So, that is something, though, that we will make a priority this, this coming year. I know I've heard about it for the five-plus years I've been on here, and it's probably time to redo it, to look at it closely.
Do you have something else?
On the budget specifically, Mr. Gilchrist might be a better question for you. If I'm understanding the budget incorrectly, we basically have taken a hundred thousand, ninety-five thousand dollars from ARPA funds away from this year's budget versus last, right? Because I think you said we were at one forty-five and change, now we're down to fifty thousand?
Correct.
But ultimately, we've, the only reason that there isn't a bigger, so when you look at these numbers, I think you said it's just over six thousand dollars was the difference year over year?
Right.
But that's only because we, we basically replaced the hundred thousand ARPA funds with a hundred thousand from the opioid settlement, right?
That's correct.
And like, and I think that opioid settlement is appropriately directed towards health and human service, no doubt, but my, my concern is that we continue to have this issue of sustainable budgeting relative to this, because right now, we're still taking fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds. So, if the ARPA funds weren't in the picture, and they won't be soon enough, the increase for this year wouldn't be six thousand dollars, it would be fifty-six thousand dollars in the budget. Am I, is my math correct on this?
That is correct.
All right, and so that's where my concern is, and same concern that I raised last year, relative to the idea of leaning into ARPA funds, you know, to have a one-time infusion of funding for ongoing expenses, and now we have these programs which are meaningful, and they're doing good work, don't get me wrong, but I'm looking at it more from the perspective of, all right, well, where, where is the revenue generation going forward? Because we don't have ARPA funds coming in. I understand that we have a bit of a buffer with opioid, you know, settlement, that's ten years, I believe. So, we have nine more year, nine more budgets after this, where that provides a hundred thousand dollars. But in practical terms, once we pull, say, the fifty thousand that's in this year from ARPA funds, that's going to leave a gap, and the six thousand increase probably won't be six thousand, it'll probably be a bit higher, just contractual obligations, or whatever the case might be, going forward, and just the cost of things. So, I think we continue to have this issue where we've created this department doing important work, but on a sustainable budget trajectory, from my perspective. And I don't know how we best address that, but I think it needs to be addressed, because we can't just, I, I think that when the ARPA funds are no longer in the picture, and we have, you know, a fifty-six or sixty thousand dollar increase year over year, that's a tremendous, you know, increase as a percentage of budget, but just in real dollars. And so I think we need to be thinking about how we can make sure that we maintain the good work that you're doing and provide the services, but in a more sustainable way than we currently are, because I don't think we're there.
So, I think our plan was, our plan was, last year, was to kind of feather in the impact on the tax levy, just with the ARPA. So, we were going to be lowering ARPA, lowering ARPA, lowering ARPA, and that way you kind of phase in the, on the tax levy, taking it over. The opioid settlements have kind of given us a nice, longer cushion on this, and this doesn't even include Purdue Pharma, which is still out there. So, I think that we have, if anything, we've gained some time, and we may say, over the next few years, let's use more of the opioid settlements to new programs, but I think, I think we're on a good track to feather this in because of these other revenues that have to be dedicated to this anyway. But I get your concern, that's my concern all the time.
That's my biggest concern, is the tax levy piece of this. You know, if there's grant opportunities, if there are ways that we can fund, if there are ways that we can double the impact, I'm all in favor of that, but I'm just looking from, from a tax levy standpoint, that trough, you know, pulling from that is going to be increasingly harder, especially when we think about, you know, the high school, the vote coming out, all those sorts of things that are coming up, and, and we see school department each year goes up considerably. And I'm just thinking from the tax base, we can't keep pulling from the tax base to replenish what is lost when ARPA is out of the picture. So, I'd like to know how we're going to be able to do that going forward.
In this, in this particular budget, we have a long time period now, because of the opioid settlement money.
Well, I mean, but there's still fifty, I mean, there's still, you know, fifty thousand in ARPA right there. That's, that's basically, I'll call that a placeholder, that's not a sustainable budgeting source, you know, so where, how do we make up?
It's down to one forty-five last year, so.
So, Anthony and his team have told us they will consistently look for grants. I know they partner with Steve on that. You know, I think these are great programs. I think the presentation Candace and Anthony did, you know, shows that this, this is a, this is a service we provide to the town, so I'm not, I'm not sold on that we need to be a revenue-generating department. This is something that helps so many members of our community. I think you are hearing, Anthony, you and your team, continue looking for those, those grants. I really like this screen, this last slide that you have up, because I think something that you kind of glazed over was these partnerships, and so, you know, always be looking for those, whether it's with the council on aging, whether it's with, you know, the team at the library, whether it is with veteran services, like, I think, I think if, the more we partner and coordinate, we'll find the money to continue doing these great services. But we are not having a conversation about cutting services, that's a future conversation. The conversation is on this year's budget that Kevin and Steve proposed with Anthony. Did you have something to add, Counselor Chimes?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve the Health and Human Services Department budget for fiscal year 2024 is presented.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor. Seven zero. Thank you so much. Thank you, Candace.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's great to see you all.
Thank you, Candace, thank you, Anthony.
Budget thirty-nine, General Insurance.
Yes, actually, the next two budgets, the general insurance budget and the workers' comp budget, we should have John Spinello on Zoom tonight.
Yeah, he's coming over now.
Okay. Okay. Um, Steve and I work very closely with John, uh, in preparing these budgets. Uh, the first budget is the general insurance budget. We're recommending that this budget be increased twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down twenty-one thousand seven, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars to the tax levy, one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars to the water enterprise, and six hundred and eighty dollars to the SOAR enterprise. This budget covers the town buildings, motor vehicles, professional liability, and cybersecurity. The total budget request is five hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, with four hundred and eighty thousand, nine twenty-five coming from the tax levy, twenty-six thousand, four hundred coming from the water enterprise, and fifteen thousand, four hundred coming from the SOAR enterprise. Um, with that, if there are any specific questions for John or I or Steve?
Any questions?
You did such a good job, John. No one wants to talk to you.
I was just going to say, as someone who's, again, kind of reviewed these over the years and, you know, between council and FinCom, I, I just appreciate, John, the, the work that goes into the, the budgets that you help us, uh, manage around insurance. I mean, the, the material is thorough. I think it's complete. I, you know, feel very confident in, in what we have in front of us.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Dabrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you for, for this information. Uh, is there anything that we can be doing as a town, it came up earlier, to try to, um, find ways to improve our premiums? You know, things like, case in point, you know, security systems on, on homes, for instance, reduce, you know, premiums. Are there things that we can potentially be exploring that we're not currently to try to get some of these premiums down?
Well, property coverage right now is the biggest issue in, in, in the industry. Um, and two thousand twenty-two is the second consecutive year, um, that we had, um, over a hundred billion dollars in, um, natural disasters or cat losses, as we call them. This is a very heavy property, uh, account. It has almost three hundred million dollars in, in property, uh, coverage. And so, you know, our, our buildings are based on what we call COPE. It's a construction occupancy protection. So, uh, you know, we have newer buildings, we're obviously going to have a newer building that has, um, sprinkler systems, you know, similar to what you would have in, um, the Dahlby, the Woodville, the Galvin. So it's a very heavy property account. And ten years ago, it was just one of the policies that we had. Now it's represents over forty percent of our premium. Um, and so property is a, has been a very, you know, um, difficult line of business the last couple of years. Um, we have, you know, we've improved on this, you know, four years ago, we bought a cyber policy. A year and a half ago, we bought a, an excess liability policy because we had immediate contractual need through the police department. So we've expanded. It, it was, it was over, five years ago, we had a hundred and sixty vehicles. We have averaged a hundred and eighty vehicles. So it's more, it isn't just premium, um, growth as much as it is internal growth for the town. Um, and that, when we had the Galvin Middle School, which was built in two thousand fourteen, we had thirty-two million dollars on it. When we're all done construction, we added forty million to get to what the construction price was, was seventy-two. So it's been a lot of, uh, organic growth, if you will, on, on, on this. It, it isn't so much about, you know, can we, can we save money? Um, we try to do it every year. Um, Steve and I do. Uh, so we, um, so I think we do everything we can. We have a, a, a very, um, broad program, I think. We have everything we need. Uh, we don't have anything that we don't need. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. And, and when I look at, you know, the coverages that we have and I compare it to some of my other commercial, you know, in the private sector, I, I think it's a, it's a really good program. I have a contractor at the end of the week that's almost seven hundred thousand dollars, doesn't have, you know, can't compare it to a town. So, uh, you know, our average premium on our, our vehicles is about six hundred and fifty dollars. It's composite rated and we have a hundred and eighty of them. So, um, and we have some that have, have real high values like FI department does. So I, I think what we have is good. Um, and so I, we do it all the time in terms of trying to save premium, but it's more on the negotiation side than it is to try to look at, you know, should we add something here or, uh, put a sprinkler system in one building? So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but.
It does. And I guess similarly with workers' compensation as a part of this whole mix, you know, is there any additional training or education, you know, I'm thinking like DPW, for instance, or, or any, any other department that could perhaps, um, be an investment in our, in our, our workforce, but also bring down either the premiums? Or is that just based on number of incidents, number of claims, no matter what?
We talking about workers' comp now?
Yeah.
So, um, so the workers' compensation, you know, we had twenty-three claims last year. Two were denied. Uh, one was eighteen dollars, but we had three hundred and thirty thousand totaled in, in claims, um, which is more than our expected losses, more than I would like. And we're still benefiting from the year when we had COVID, we had to shut down, and then we had the good weather, you know, all of our off-premises exposures like the water and sewer and cemetery, electrical, they were all working during that time. But we only had eighty thousand dollars in claims, which was a, a real low for us. Last year was a, was higher than I would certainly like to see it. This year, we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in claims presently. But one of those claims, which is something we don't have very often, is we had a DPW, um, auto accident and it wasn't a fault. We put the other carrier on notice. That's about thirty thousand dollars. So right now, we're, as, as long as we can close that claim by the end of the year, we're at a hundred thousand dollars this year. I think when you consider the amount of employees that we have, um, on premises, and then you factor in weather, and sometimes you factor in age of the employee, the company may be compromised, I think we are doing really well. There was a time, twenty-five years ago, I could book forty-eight to fifty-six claims every year. And I kept ratcheting down. And I kept wondering, well, you know, I was always walking through breakout and I was thinking to myself, that's not what I'm doing, all my thinking. I said, why, you know, why is it, why, why is it now that we only have, you know, you know, twenty-five claims? And I started to think, well, we've got younger employees. They're in better physical shape. If they do fall down, they're, they're going to get up. And some of the older ones might not. 401Ks, retirement, you know, even if you're out on workers' compensation and collecting benefits, you're not putting any money into your retirement. And then there's technology. I mean, you know, we can now go, um, and have remote learning. So we keep people off the premises when there's snow and ice. Uh, we have better snow removal, um, better communication, um, more educated about what, you know, we have lift belts now. We, we have Park and Forestry, which has some tremendous equipment. So technology's played a big role in that. So that's why we're down to this, this low number. But when you look at workers' comp, there's, there's two sides to it, right? There's the medical costs and then the indemnity to that employee who's out. On the other side, it's, it's what are the, what are the rates that are being, that the state puts out there? And then what is our payroll? And what, what puts that scale one way or the other is our experience rate modification. And four years ago, maybe five, our experience was one thirty-two. So we're thirty-two percent above the rates. And because that good COVID year, um, uh, we're below. It's the first time in over twenty years we've been below the, on the experience rating. So I'm very happy about that. Um, I kind of got ahead of myself on the comp. Steve will tell you, once we start talking about comp, I'll talk about it all day long.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thanks. We're still on general insurance, I think, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about general insurance? Uh, motion?
I'd say since we've moved on to our workers' comp, uh, yes, move to approve the general insurance budget for fiscal year 2024 is proposed.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. And now moving on to Budget Forty-three, Workers' Comp.
Yes, the Workers' Comp budget. We are recommending that the fiscal twenty-four budget be increased five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars over the current fiscal year. Uh, this increase breaks down, the tax levy portion has been decreased twenty-five hundred dollars. The water enterprise was decreased eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The SOAR enterprise was increased one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. And the municipal light department was increased six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So the total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, with four hundred and thirty-four thousand coming from the tax levy, seventy-four hundred from the water enterprise, ten thousand six hundred from the SOAR enterprise, and forty-one thousand from the gas and light department.
Thank you. Anything to add, gentlemen?
Can I just add a few things?
Yes.
Here. Okay. So, um, since we're on the credit side on our experience modification, the carrier extended our, our three percent, um, premium credit. Um, we had it last year because we were at point nine nine. When that happens, they're more willing to give us credit because they, they are, um, it's a self-insured group, so the division of insurance looks over their financials. So if we had a point three two mod, for instance, they're not going to give us the three percent credit. They'd like to, but they get scrutinized for that. That three percent for us is a lot. It's almost fifteen thousand dollars. And last year in, in June, we received a first of four dividends. It was ninety-five hundred dollars. Uh, so I wanted to book it this year and so we just, I put it down for nine thousand because that's one and a half percent of the premium. So that's, um, this is a good budget, I think, um, in that we have a, a very heavy payroll in there. So, um, you know, in the fall, we do our rod. I don't expect to have any additional premium. And, you know, with, with the dividend and, and the, the three percent, uh, credit, it, it's a, it's a good budget, I think.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, move to accept the workers' compensation budget for fiscal year 2024 is presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And Budget Forty-five, retirement.
Yes, the retirement budget. Uh, we should have Kathy Cheek on Zoom tonight. Uh, Kathy is the executive directive for the retirement system for Wakefield. Um, the fiscal twenty-four retirement budget is increased four hundred and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down, the contributory tax levy portion was increased three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, forty-six dollars. The non-contrib portion tax levy was decreased thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. The water, SOAR, and light department, uh, enterprise transfers increased a total of eighty thousand, seven hundred and six, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This budget is based on an updated funding, funding schedule ordered by the Wakefield Retirement Board, runs through twenty thirty-six, and is based on a January two thousand twenty-two valuation. Our current funding, uh, ratio is seventy-three point seven percent. We use a investment return assumption of seven point four, seven point four percent. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is seven million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, thirty-seven dollars, with six million, four oh nine, two thirty-five coming from tax levy, and one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight oh two coming from enterprise transfers. And with that, if there are any specific questions for Kathy or I?
Kathy, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Uh, Counselor Chimes?
Uh, just a quick question. Does this budget incorporate the, the cost of living adjustment that we approved two weeks ago, or is, does that get kind of folded into the next cycle?
I, I think, Kathy, is that fiscal twenty-six?
Yeah, that will be folded into the next one.
Okay.
For the January first of twenty twenty-four funding schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That seemed easy. Excuse me, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve the contributory retirement budget for fiscal year twenty-two forty-four as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor. I, unanimous. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining.
Thank you, Kathy.
And thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Nice to be here in person.
You're good to see you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to.
You must like your move in FinCom because he's going to dial in the FinCom.
Um, uh, item number, sorry, I just lost it. Number seven, bonds.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, since, uh, our town administrator is, uh, a little under the weather, bear with me while I read the, the full motion. Uh, move that the sale of the two million dollar water bond of the town dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the authority, is hereby approved and the town treasurer or appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on February fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts as follows. Uh, twenty twenty-four installment two hundred thousand, twenty twenty-five installment two hundred thousand, twenty twenty-six installment two hundred thousand, twenty twenty-seven installment two hundred thousand, twenty twenty-eight installment two hundred thousand, twenty twenty-nine installment two hundred thousand, twenty thirty installment two hundred thousand, twenty thirty-one installment two hundred thousand, twenty thirty-two installment two hundred thousand, and twenty thirty-three installment two hundred thousand. Uh, further moved that each member of the town council, uh, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and are hereby authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing motion. I think that is the sum total. I don't need to rest, read the rest of that.
No, you don't.
And I could say, second, that's, right?
Yes.
Could you read it down? Moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion, Steve?
I was going to say, this is for the water tower that's being replaced, um, and I believe it was a five million dollar project. And two million of that is on interest-free bonds from the MWRAs. So I like interest-free, interest-free money, obviously, so.
What's the timetable for that to get started?
Um, it's already been approved or it's on.
No, I know it's.
Oh, yeah. I would imagine very shortly, you know, maybe this summer. I think that bar, that, that water tower has been there since early nineteen hundreds, nineteen twenties, about a hundred years old.
I remember Rick Stinson always said that was the one thing that kept him over.
We've, we've got a good, good run out of it. Probably got a hundred years out of it, so.
That and the library, same age.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, all in favor. Three, unanimous, seven zero. Um, Sherry, will you send around something electronically for all of us to sign?
Um, actually, Madam Chair, I'd love to send them around electronically, but you do have to sign them.
We do? Okay.
Yeah, and I stupidly, I apologize, did not bring them with me tonight.
Okay.
So, uh, you'll have to sometime come into town hall. We'll have them.
Sounds great.
Sorry.
Will you all have to sign? Everyone?
I need a quorum.
Okay. So Sherry, just let us, I guess there'll be, whenever they're available, let us.
They'll be ready tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, don't apologize. That's fine. You didn't know how the vote was going to go.
No, I, they were, they were on the corner of my desk and they're still there.
Um, item eight, opioid settlement.
Yeah, Madam Chair, why don't I take this? Um, I'm looking for a vote authorizing the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town a, another, uh, opioid settlement. Uh, we got this from our lawyers in the opioid litigation, Scott and Scott. This one settles all claims with Teva, Allergen, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Uh, this is more opaque than the last round of settlements because we haven't seen a schedule of what, uh, the payout would be. In part, that's because whether there would be any settlement at all, and if so, how much each settling party would get depends on how many parties settle. And so that information necessarily has to come later. Uh, in a situation like this, I can only look for guidance to the lawyers we hired and they recommend that we do accept this settlement. Uh, so I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, but I've pretty much given you all I know. And, uh, on the basis of their recommendation, I'd ask for a motion authorizing the town administrator to sign the, um, settlement agreement on behalf of the town.
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion. Okay, and any discussion? Counselor McLean?
One quick question, Tom. Is there a minimum participation before this, you know, thing goes away or?
I haven't seen any number.
Okay. So two-thirds don't have to, you haven't seen any number?
I, I've not.
Okay, that's, that's opaque.
Counselor Chimes?
Uh, thank you. So, so in our packet, I know there, there is a spreadsheet that has some dollar figures. Is that basically a, a best guess based on what we know?
That's, that's the guess that they sent out to us, yeah.
So that could be higher or lower.
Higher, yeah. Right around there, I think.
Okay, great. And, and remind, we, we. Okay, great. And remind, we have already approved the J and J settlement, right?
J and J, yeah.
Thank you.
And also Collegium, which was.
Oh, that's right. That was a, yeah, a smaller number.
So Purdue Farmer is the big one out there that. Part of the interest when that comes down.
Okay, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you, Steve. You can sign on our behalf. Item nine, American Rescue Plan Act update.
Okay, this should be up, and. Here we go. All right, so the council did ask back in November, we did distribute some of the ARPA funds, or additional amount of the ARPA funds, and I thank the council for meeting with me on that. And as was stated then, we would give up a quarterly update on what has been expended. Unfortunately, a lot of these projects are outdoor projects, so not a lot has been expended, but I think you'll see a very different picture in this when we get into our summer and spring months. So anyways, to go back over a little bit of what we do have, you may remember that Wakefield received a little over eight million dollars in ARPA funds. Of that, we actually expended some. We did talk about fiscal 2022 budget, twenty-three budget, and fiscal twenty-four. We talked about putting seventy-five thousand to help the budget. We dropped that down to fifty because of some of the other funding that we have in, and the schools got three sixty-three in 2023. They have made some rumblings about looking for some in 2024, so there is a question mark there, just for warning. Some other ARPA expenditures that weren't necessarily budget related, school and first responder, overtime, these have already been expended in well in advance of the things we did in November. Contact tracing, test kits, clinics, elections, town meeting assistance, that was a lot of money spent there. Fight Department, overtime, we talked about that a little tonight, and the fit court, which was kind of a fun one in May of 2022, and people probably will be using it tomorrow, but I think it's gonna be, it's a real fun, it's a real fun thing. So when we, when we met on November fourteenth, the council approved a number of items, an early assistance, an energy assistance fund. That was four hundred thousand. We spent ninety-five hundred. That has been very slow going. You know, our thought process going in, I think Councilor Dombrowski pointed that out, was to kind of leverage estate money first and get as much as we could. That has been a very, very slow process through the state. In some instances, I'll tell you that, where people were desperate, we jumped the gun before the state because I'm not gonna have people freeze, and then we'll back in with Leo or what have you. But that, that has, seems to be ratcheting up, my understanding that it was simply a staffing problem. It wasn't well enough staffed in the, in the lit office, which is really too bad. But we have helped a number of citizens and, you know, the slowness there luckily was coupled with a warmer-than-usual winter, and a couple of days, so that wasn't so bad. Lake Corner Power cleanup and the Vetsville parking lot. We have, and the Vetsville parking lot cleanup and restroom. I'm looking at you. Your restroom, right? The construction survey has been done.
You're making it sound like Julie has some sort of.
And soil, and some soil borings. But we are looking for design and construction, hopefully coming forward in the summer of twenty-three. Lake pathways, which were those smaller pathways on the north half side of the lake, we're looking at those in the summer of 2023. The rail-to-trail, we are on the state tip list for this, and a lot of this was to look at the fixing and cleaning and design between Galvin and Water Street, and looking for that this summer as well. And that's why the Zero Mechanism hasn't been expended yet, although that's gonna change very quickly. Tree replacement, two things we're waiting for. Number one is to actually view the trees we're gonna buy. Our town arborist actually goes out and views them probably leaf by leaf, if I know him, to make sure they're not diseased, that we get the ones that we like. We also are applying for a DCR grant and waiting to hear that, so that could further expand that amount, which is great. Sidewalk, sidewalk expansion all over town. We're looking for a lot of work to be done in 2023, spring and summer for Lowell, Elm, Parker, Montrose, Water, and Farm Street, and contracts should be awarded in 2023. So you see a lot of sidewalk work around town, and that connectivity to neighborhoods is really fantastic. WCAT expenses, that has actually been paid, and although we approved three hundred, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, it was one thirty-six, seven fifty, so there are two fifty that is unexpended. That stays back into the till there. Next thing, the water truck is probably gonna be received from Canada, so that is, it seems that they have the best water truck there, and that is being finalized. I was actually waiting for a, maybe an email today to tell me that it happened, but that's, that's getting there. The conference rooms upgrades, we frankly need to ratchet those up because of, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen with Zoom at the end of this month. Our IT guys have been spending a lot of time at the Public Safety Building, and actually have saved us, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in contract fees. So that's, you know, I'm gonna pull some of them off of that to get some of these things going, and really to upgrade the one at the second floor conference room in Town Hall, so that can be used better. ADA swing will be in the spring of 2023. The Civil War Monument Evaluation, we are expecting that report back today, tomorrow, or the next day, March first, and we certainly won't pay for it till we receive it. That will allow us to evaluate where we need to go and what we need to do to get to the next step and to have that prepared. And on the title searches, which the Conservation Commission was doing and requested because, you know, a lot of land that is owned in the town of Wakefield, some is tax title, some may be parkland, and some of the old records in the assessors' office may not be up to date. So by doing title search and on all, title searches on all town-owned land, we'll kind of know where we are and what we need to do with all these things. So that's where we are right now on ARPA funds. So not a lot have been spent, has been spent, but there's been a lot going on. And I think when I come back in, you know, May or June to look at this again, you're gonna see a lot more numbers in the right-hand side here. So very brief update today, Madam Chair. Open for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm really not happy.
Do you just keep two hundred and fifty dollars that you're supposed to give to CAT, or is that?
No, I think, I think that I actually, yeah, they'll probably come looking for it. I think I actually rounded it up there, but that goes back into the.
Okay, all right.
I know that you're very accounting-like.
Well, there you go. That's, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
If you wanna have good lighting in this studio, you better make sure that that can square away.
At least mine, right?
Steve, this was super helpful. I'm really looking forward to it quarterly. I think the updates are great. Who knew that the water trucks were made in Canada?
I think that's the best one.
That's, that's great.
That's what they've been told.
I, I, I will, I will just do a little plug for some coordination as you talked about tree planting, and, you know, we're, we're hopeful for kind of our process of when trees are getting cut down. So as we plant them and, and the arborist goes out to buy the trees, just remember that we'd like an update about when trees are coming down also. The full life cycle of trees would be appreciated. Any other questions, comments? Okay, item ten.
Madam Chair, move to approve a one-day liquor license on March thirty-first, 2023, from six thirty to ten thirty at the Crystal Community Club.
Second, great. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, apologies.
I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, this is a fundraiser for the class of 2024, which is an underage, they're not twenty-one. So I'm assuming that we looked at it and its parents?
It's parents, yeah.
It's not kids under twenty-one.
No, they won't be drinking if they're under twenty-one, but it's parents, yeah.
Okay, I think this goes to our earlier conversation. Okay, thank you.
And also, Sherry, just to confirm, because the application says the class of 2024. But the request on the agenda says 2023?
The date of the events is 2023, but for the class of.
Never mind, just kidding. Thank you.
That was my interpretation.
It is getting late. Yes, no, you are right. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Seven zero, thank you.
I'm gonna combine the rest of these, if that's okay, but move to approve the Class One renewals for Liberty Chevrolet for 2023, for Liberty Izuzu Truck for 2023, and for Liberty Motor Car, ZBA Liberty Mazda for 2023, as well as the Class Two renewals for Liberty Chevrolet for 2023, and Liberty Motor Car Company Incorporated for 2023.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
And Madam Chair, for item eleven, move to appoint Kasumi Humphries to fill the unexpired alternate three-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals that runs through April thirty, 2024.
Second. And I'll open it up for discussion. Let me just explain this process a little bit. So in 2021, the town council created a new process for the appointment of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the, for the open positions, and the process was the town chair designate the Economic Development Manager, Director, and the chair of the ZBA would meet and interview in person the candidates. Myself, David Hatfield, and Aaron Kakinda did this last week. We met with two candidates. Town, Tom Mullins had come up with the approved questions, that we asked the questions. Both candidates were great. They, they showed up in spite of potential snowstorm last week. They're really enthusiastic, really want to serve their town. After speaking with both of them and listening to Chair David Hatfield, the, the, Kasumi, who is an interior designer, had a skill set that they are looking for on the, on the board. So that was also the recommendation of the ZBA, but it is unanimously the recommendation of the three-member committee, appointing committee, I guess. So that's just my report. Councilor McLean, question?
Well, thanks, thanks for the explanation, because I didn't see a lot, a lot of material to, but there was some indication that there were three applicants. Were all the applicants given the opportunity?
Yes, one applicant pulled their application before we scheduled the interviews.
And, and the other question I had, because I'm doing this from memory, is, you know, would we normally, the town council, get a resume of a person, or is that not part of our process?
We would. I feel like, did we get them before, Sherry? Were they part of an earlier package?
I want to say they were sent earlier, but normally, yes, you would all get the resumes. Yep.
Okay, I just, I didn't recall seeing that. I don't know whether we got them or not.
It might have been in an email. When we posted, Sherry usually sends us the, the candidates, so you should see that, and we can get it re-sent. They're, they're great resumes, so.
No, that's fine. I, I just, I didn't recall seeing that, and I didn't see a lot in the package, so I just wanted to ask about our policy, because I remember when we created that.
Yeah, no, you should definitely see them all, so we'll work on that. And we will, I say this all the time as we make appointments, we have such great candidates, and we encourage candidates to look at all positions that are open in town, and we'll find a right fit at some point. So that goes with the two candidates I met with last week. Okay, and all in favor? Great, seven zero, unanimous. Thank you. Item twelve, donations.
Madam Chair, move to accept a donation for a gift or gifts to the council on aging in the amount of a hundred dollars from various donors with banks.
Second. And all in favor? Oh, sorry, discussion.
Sorry, I know, I was wrong. It's just blacked out. I'm surprised to see the name blacked out. I thought we usually see who gives things and if there's a reason why we wouldn't in this case.
Sherry, that's a question for you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
So the, the source of the donation is blacked out, which is a little unusual, I thought. I thought we usually see people. Was that a request, or are we just no longer seeing who's giving donations?
They're normally redacted.
They are normally redacted?
Yeah, yeah. On donations, they are, yeah.
I guess I'm a little surprised. Like, I think we should know who we're getting donations from, who are, you know, I don't know. Okay, if they're, if they're normally redacted, I usually look at them, so. Okay. I sure, I'm, Councilor Mullin, if we, if people wanted to know who it was, it's public information? Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, a lot of time, this is with various donors from banks, so a lot of times it's like the, the classes, like Zumba classes, people pay, right, so they lump it all together?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like the library we usually see.
I don't remember if we see.
We'll have to go back and look.
Okay.
I mean, it's fine. I'm, I'm fine. And if, if it is something we wanted to know, it is, it's open information, so I'm not worried about it.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, move to approve the minutes from the February thirteen, 2023 Town Council meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Hi, seven zero.
And Madam Chair, move to approve the minutes from the February thirteen, 2023 Town Council Executive Session.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Announcements. Councilor Chimes?
Happy to start. So I had the, the joy this weekend of, you know, just going through town this weekend and talking to a lot of folks about the upcoming special election for the high school, which is coming up on March eleventh. And, you know, what was great was to hear so many people supporting the project, so many people who'd come to town meeting. What was a little frightening was the number of people that didn't realize that we had a special election coming up. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone in town is aware that there is a special election for the high school project. This is the second part of a two-part process to approve the school. The first was town meeting. This is the second part. Polls will be open from seven AM until eight PM at the Galvin Middle School, and that's on Saturday, March eleventh, so Saturday election, little different. For folks that are unable to be there on Saturday, absentee balloting is available, and people can actually go to Town Hall, to the town clerk's office during regular business hours, basically any time between now and the day before the election to fill out an absentee ballot. So absolutely encourage people to, to go, participate, make your voice heard. Would certainly ask folks to support the school as well, but, you know, regardless of where you are, please make sure you go vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Vincent?
I fixed my jaw before I speak. I'm gonna try to go to the hockey game. I think that's Wednesday night at eight o'clock. The boys play in Stonem in the state tournament, and then Friday night, I believe at five thirty, the girls play basketball here, and then followed right after by the boys' game here, and that's also the first round of the state playoffs. So I'm gonna try to go to, to those two basketball games on a Friday night. I'm excited to see, I think both the boys and girls went eighteen and two in the regular season. That's very phenomenal.
Councilor McLean?
Councilor Dombrowski had mentioned the cultural exchange last meeting, and took him up on the suggestion, went over there last Friday night. It was a very, very good art show, three local artists, very well attended, and one of the tangible intangibles is the economic benefit. So there were three dinners at the public kitchen preceding the five thirty art viewing. So these are the things we have to keep in mind, that there are benefits attendant to having that kind of artwork and that kind of a, a situation in town for people to avail themselves of. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Dombrowski?
Thanks. And I think actually that the show's been extended. I know it's been extended for one more week. So for those who haven't seen it yet, it's available Friday evening for viewing, and I'm sure publication has a table waiting for you. And just a reminder to everyone that we're hearing about some snow tomorrow, so please think about shoveling out your neighbors. It doesn't sound like it's a tremendous amount of accumulation, but it's probably enough to, to make it challenging for, for some of your neighbors, especially those that are part of our older population. And please, please, please adopt a hydrant, the hydrant nearest your home. Make sure that you get out there with a shovel if you could, to try to make sure you, you clear that out for our fire department, for everyone's safety. Thank you. safety. Thank you.
Does that mean you're coming to my house tomorrow?
I am driving all around town with a shovel, yes.
I'm one of the seniors who knew you'd go.
Just, just text or email me your address, and I'll be there. Thank you.
So you've joined the snow angels?
Counselor Danahue?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the final community survey for the master plan is open through March twentieth, so I encourage everybody to complete it. It's been a robust process with the workshops and, or community forums, and this is your opportunity to have your voice heard, so please do that. You can complete it online, you can find the link on the website at wakefield dot mass dot U S, or you can pick up a paper copy at Town Hall.
Thank you. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
March eighth is International Women's Day, and the Human Rights Commission, as always, they're, well, I guess maybe not as always, it's probably the first time back since COVID, is holding a program, gosh, Mary, you're gonna remind me where.
Savings Bank Theater.
It's at the Savings Bank Theater in, I thought, here at the high school, and I just encourage everybody to go, I see they were also looking for volunteers, so if you have a little time, they could also use some volunteers that evening.
Great.
Oh, yeah, I had a couple of things, number one, that the first round of state aid did come out, I did share that with the council, I was reasonably happy with our numbers, and then I look at some other communities, and I do what I call the slow burn, I know everybody others did, but that's okay. Made a few calls, and we had some nice laughs with other people, but this is, this is where we had anticipated way back in November, or October, we had the tri-board meeting, so I'm pleased that that is, is on, on track. This is the first round, however, it's called House One Budget, and it's the governor's budget, and there'll be a lot of moving back and forth, and I would imagine we won't have the final numbers, probably not until June, I bet we won't have them at town meeting, but I do think that these numbers, state able only go up for us, is my, my hopeful prediction, so I think that's very, very good news overall for the town of Wakefield, and the big jump was in Chapter Seventy due to the funding, again, of the Student Opportunities Act, so that has worked out well for us, which is nice enough. The other thing is, is that we did talk a little bit about the housing choice application, I wanna thank Counselor Vincent, Counselor McLean, and Counselor Danahue for helping out with this. I believe, and that we do have met the five hundred units, so we're in good shape, but I will be sending that around, it's due Friday for comments, it's your typical state application where you fill in a few blanks and press send, and miraculously it comes back, oh, you checked all the boxes, so that's good, and it does, just helps us get grants, or get more scoring for grants, so, appreciate everybody's comments on that, too. And that's it, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom, anything to add?
Nothing.
Sherry?
Nothing, thank you.
Great, so just, just one update from me, last, last meeting, we had a presentation from Erin Kakinda and Jim Hogan from the Planning Board about a working group to, for the MBTA community, I wanna thank Counselor Julie Smith-Galvin for stepping up and being the volunteer on that working group, we look forward to hearing all about it. All those meetings will be open to the public, so anyone can participate, but Julie will be the Town Council hat. And that is my list, so do I have, let's see, item number fifteen, matters not anticipated for the agenda, and then item number sixteen?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second. Great, all in favor? Say hi, thank you. Our next regular Town Council meeting is Monday, March thirteenth, at seven PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.